Here at any moment. We will be able to have at least four of the five of you joining us this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. With that said, I am going to, I apologize that I don't have my agenda up, but I I will pull it up now. So first on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments for the record, Mario?
There was one pre-submitted public comment I shared. I couldn't present it now if you want me to. But other than that, there's no live public comments.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, just because I'm trying to catch up here, reading the public comments. You are. You know what, I can, you know what, Mario, I have it up, so let me read the public comment disclaimer. So while trustee trustee Barnes is settling in. So members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular board, regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this form to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time of for public comment on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic unless amended. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within the jurisdiction. It's board, sorry, East Coast time and tired. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's rights to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against the district employees or others, even those made a public board meeting, may be actual civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, or policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunities to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. I'm gonna, the first public comment is from Gail Castello, item number four. Maybe I should read it after, since it's actually specifically item number four, we can read it later. That's okay with folks?
Number four. I don't think we're supposed to. Special board meetings, just public comment, yeah.
She said, hmm. Item C. Okay, yeah, it's public comments. So in the list of goals is elimination of disproportionality. That is a long word and much less common word for disparities, disparities in what? In natural gifts, in primary languages, in any disciplines, and other elements of a student's childhood outside the classroom, or the results of their educational experiences today. Does WSC hope to create such an overhaul of students' personal and educational lives that there are no, that no longer any disparities or differences? Especially in the area of home languages versus the language of instruction in the public school. Many children benefit from being bilingual, and a different primary language should not always be seen as a negative. When I was teaching in high school, I had excellent students who were still considered ESL students long after their vocabulary and composition skills surpassed nearly all other students. Lastly, I would encourage again, the school board, create, for example, lists of goals and agendas that are actually informative rather than the minimum words terms required to meet state laws. Furthermore, the fact that no one responds to the public comments means that there is no reason to ask questions in person or on the public comments forum. And so in response to Ms. Castello's question is disproportionately means the overrepresentative, how we actually adopt and understand the word of disproportionality is that the overrepresentation of underrepresentation or underrepresentation of racial or ethnic group compared with its percentage in the population. Disparity specifically means the unequal outcomes of one racial or ethnic group compared with other outcomes for another racial or ethnic group. Thank you to staff for helping me craft the response. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to item number D, Board Governance. Dr. Hildreth, I turn it over to you for the board study session.
Thank you, President Wong, and good evening, trustees. Glad to have you join us for this study session this evening. We have two parts that we want to spend some time talking about. The first part is going to be a review of our strategic plan and more. So what that means for year one implementation. So we're all excited about this five-year plan that we've invested a lot of time in, and now we get to the work. The work is the implementation. And so we have spent the last two months meeting with our school administrators, our district administrators to share what is it that we're going to be implementing. And so we wanted to give you an overview, quick overview this evening of what that year one implementation looks like. And know that throughout this school year, we'll be bringing regular updates to the board of how we're measuring our progress. We'll be showing you what the school's plans are, things like that. So here to meet with you and be a part of this dialogue is our partner from Performance Fact, Bugbaii. And so Mu Tye, welcome to our board study session.
Thank you.
And I'm going to hand it off to you and because I believe you have the slide.
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again, and thanks, thanks again for the chance to work with the district. We really enjoyed it. We hope you're pleased with the finished product. As Dr. Hildreth said, it's now time to make sure we implement. This is why the rubber makes the road. Our experience has been about two-thirds, maybe 70% of districts actually follow through on their plan. And from what I've seen so far, working with the superintendent and her team, I think Washington USC is going to raise that, that figure significantly. What I'd like to do is to frame the implementation process. And Cheryl, I pass it back to you for the specifics around the school plan and district plan, right? Or do you want me to, okay. Of course. So if, if, if you were to look at the 47-page version, let's see if I can share my screen. May I be allowed to share my screen, please?
Mario, I think you have probably host controls.
We're working on that right now.
I think, I think I got it. Okay, great. Let me know when you can see the cover page. Can you see that, please?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is the long version of the strategic plan and the, the last two, two of the last three pages, if I go to page 45, you know, actually begin to frame the implementation process. We call this our roadmap. And what we've done with the district for the last, for the last school year is the to move forward as one on the district strategic plan. So the every three to six-year part is done. Now we begin the implementation process and the the tool that we have found very helpful with districts is to tie everything to the calendar. So what are the things we must do at the start of the school year? The superintendent touched on that, and we'll get into more detail. What are the things that need to be done every week, every month? Every cycle, six to 12 weeks. So it could be nine-week quarters. Elementary schools sometimes have their assessments every six weeks. Some schools do trimester. And then mid-year, end of year. And at every point in the process, we always ask for data or encourage our clients to present some data to show the progress. So start of the school year is about child recourse. Every week is about monitoring and adjusting, et cetera. So what we've done since early July, we're going to stop sharing and do a new share is to work with the superintendent and our team to define the focus for the school year. So this is the same template I should saw before, except it's now in the last column. It spells out the areas, perhaps I should do this in PowerPoint slide mode. Okay. So in the last column are the areas that we working on for, will be working on, and I've already started for 22, 23 school year. So start of the school year is about getting the schools going, so the annual school level action plan. It's also about having the district-level departments define their priorities for the year. In other words, how will the district level support the activities of the schools? Also, at the start of the school year, we've begun the conversation about how do we make sure we have a data assessment and performance or monitoring process in place? And then finally, at the start of the school year, it's about the scorecard, and we can show you some examples of what the, the schools are working on. So those are the activities at the start of the school year. Very shortly, the superintendent and her team will tell you where we're starting each one of these. Then every month, it's about monitoring, about setting some clear monthly priorities, some capacity building work at the cabinet level. And I think this is actually a very fresh idea. The district has some other consultants in addition to Performance Fact that are supporting the effort. So Dr. Hildreth, as requested, we bring those consultants together once a month to make sure that the work we're doing is actually aligned. So we call it alignment and coherence among the professional service providers. And that will take place roughly every four to six weeks. Then every six to 12 weeks, it looks like it would be every quarter. We will be doing it like a timeout. We call it a data summit. So that's the one-year school plan, but every nine weeks, roughly every nine weeks, we come together to say, how are we doing based on what's happening for just nine weeks? And then use that information to set the priorities for the, the next nine weeks. That's the essence of the data summit. And the superintendent also, we have in some school quality review processes with selected schools. And then mid-year and end of year, it's about keeping stakeholders engaged. So there'd be a media report, media evaluation of progress so far. And most districts will actually have that be presented at a board meeting, a regular board meeting, so that the community can get feedback, can get some information from you about how, about the progress on the strategic plan. And then again, at the end of the school year, we have another progress report to be, to the stakeholders. And again, at every point in the process, there's always reference to data. Data about, that's based on student voice. Data from the dashboard, what we call the vital signs scorecard. And data from a tool we call the CPR card. CPR stands for continuous progress report card. And it's monitoring the activities. So there's two levels of monitoring with those cards. The CPR card monitors the tasks. Are we doing what we say we've set out to do? And the vital signs scorecard monitors what difference it's making. So one is a monitoring of the progress on activities. The other one is focused on, on results. So monitoring process, as well as outcomes. So that's the map for this year. And Dr. Hildreth, anything else you want me to touch on, define? And I'll go back to you.
I think the, the big piece, I'm going to show one part of what we're doing with the schools. But if you can also show the sample district plans.
Yes.
What that looks like after I talk about the school piece. Do you have the other slide deck to show?
I just, yeah, something that is, check your email, it should be there. Okay, just a minute. I'm sorry about that. That's not going through.
So as Mario is getting the, waiting for the slide deck to come through, it wasn't up. Really what I want to focus on, what Mu Tye was talking about, is this process. So in July, at the admin, well, it started in June at the admin advance, and in our admin advance in July, the first step is for our schools to say, of all of those goals that we have, what are the ones that we're going to be focused on for this year? Again, knowing that we're not expecting them to get through all of the goals. So the schools, if you go down, Mario, because I just did an overview with our cabinet team. Let's see. And if you go to the slide with our goals. The one with the goals highlighted. Right there. So if you look, these are the, our goals. And so the schools, the admin worked on presenting goals. Which were the ones that we want to focus on for this year, year one? So they, with lots of conversation and dialogue, the highlighted goals are the ones that we have chosen to work on for this year. So you'll see under goal number two, each, well, each goal has three measures, three to four measures. So for our first one, it's goal to the whole child about their perception of safety. But if you also then look at goal four, number two, elimination of disproportionality, that's access to supports for emotional behavior, mental and physical health. So our admin team said, let's focus on number four, because that also will incorporate 2.1. So eliminating disproportionality for this year, all of those things are important. But we're really talking about what's the access for supports. That's what our, that's the kind of data we're going to be looking at this year. Our second goal is under goal three, 3.1. That's what our work is, increasing student achievement for our students. So that's making sure that our students are meeting or exceeding the proficiency standards. But we separated that into two separate goals. So there's meeting and exceeding proficiency standards for ELA. And then there's meeting and exceeding proficiency standards for math. So just know for the schools, they've broken that up into it's one goal here, but they separated it because they're going to have an action plan for what are the steps for ELA to get to proficiency, and then what are the steps for math? And they might look different, so they separated those goals. And then for our high schools, goal five, they focused on ninth and 10th graders on track to graduate. So again, we're also looking at, going to be looking at, what's that data? Because what we know from data and research is that if you wait till the 11th and 12th grade to start talking about graduation and being on track, it's too late. You have to start in ninth and 10th grade. So making sure that we're having those conversations that counselors are looking at, making sure students are on track at the end of the fall semester for our ninth graders. And if they're not, we can put in those interventions and supports early enough to get them on track by the end of the year. So these are the goals that our, our, our schools worked on. So Mario, if you keep clicking, then I can show an example of what the school plan looks like. Keep going. Going right here. So each, so this is a overview of the school's plan. This is the work that schools started in July at admin advance.
Can I, can I pause for a second? I, the screen didn't move forward, so on my end, on the Zoom end, did I?
Yeah, you might need to do a new share.
Yeah, just so, as you're talking, I'm not sure what you're seeing on your end, but on the Zoom end, I'm not seeing the slides advance.
Yeah, that's it.
Sorry for that. Just as we're recording and posting, it'd probably be good to make sure the slides, that the talking points. Thank you.
So now, are you seeing it now, Jackie? Or we're still?
Yes.
No. Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure how it's seeing, being seen on your end, so I can't say, but yes, I think.
Okay, let me, let me describe what you should see. So what you should see is a sample of a school's plan that shows student targets at the top. And then the goal of elimination of the disproportionality. Is that what you're seeing?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. So this is an example of a school plan. So this actually came from one of our schools. This is an example of what they wrote, saying for the, the goal on emotional behavior on mental and physical health, that's the target. Then they said, what is it that we want to do? If currently 31% of the students are saying they feel welcomed, they're safe, they want to increase that to 50%. That's their, their goal for the year. So then what they did in the step two is they started talking about what are the professional practices they would need to focus on? What are the educational strategies they'll need to focus on? And what is the PD that's connected to all of that? Then in step three, it's the action steps. So if I'm going back into the educational strategy section, and they says PBIS expectations and lessons, okay? Breaking that down means, well, who's going to do, what does that mean? That means I need to have some SEL training with my staff, okay? Who's going to do that? Who's going to do that training? That's what this plan is. So this is just giving you a sample of what the schools had to focus on. So the idea is setting a target, using, you have your goal. You set a target. And then you break it down of what are the actions that are going to happen to make PBIS lessons? Who's going to do that? And if you do those educational strategies, you will increase to 50% by the end of the year. So these are action plans. So there's a, for each target, each one of the four targets, the schools build out or are working on a plan that looks like this. So this is just giving you one goal. They've done that for each of the goals that were highlighted. I'm going to pause there for any questions, clarifications before I go on.
Just a quick question. What does BFFS stand for?
Building Foundations for Success.
Okay.
That's a class.
I think what I'm really happy to see here, you can tell that, I know you didn't get the school way, but we can tell what school it is. What you have here. But I really like that piece of student voice, because you can tell, you know, adults in a room sometimes have an idea of what's right, but making sure that the students are sharing, what do you need to feel safe? What do you need to feel welcomed at school? And I'm looking forward to watching how this develops. I'm surprised not to see like the club aspect and the other piece that I, that students so often tell me, or what helped them to feel that way on campus, but.
Yes.
And when it says consistently, do we know what that means? Does that mean?
No, that's, that's the point of really having the schools think about, that goes in the key task. So that's the questions to ask. Well, what does consistently mean? Does that mean once a month? Does that mean, you know, when are you, are, for that due date? And internally, we think about that in terms of the questions that Clerk Benegas usually asks, like, what's the purpose? Who's going to do? What are you trying to achieve? Who's going to do it? And by when do you think that will be done? So this template pretty much lays it out. What are the things that need to be done? By when do we think we should see it? Who's going to do? Who's the lead on that? And then who else is helping you? So this is an ongoing, for, again, they started at an admin advance, they've been working on it. And so the expectation is that the schools will have their plans for all four goals completed?
President Wong has raised her hand.
Oh, okay. Completed by the end of this month, then, is that correct? Okay, President Wong.
So my question is, this, this is great. And we, we clearly know when you have BFFS, like, we know where is it, where it's coming from. The articulation, right? Kind of like through grade levels and across, are we creating communities of practice with our administrators so that they can share good ideas? I mean, I know it'll be specific to each school community. But I also, my wondering is, like, is it through admin events? And how's the work continuing so that our administrators can support one another, right? So there isn't, they don't feel like an island into theirs, themselves.
Excellent point.
Yeah, well, we, we have monthly meetings where last month, we reviewed this, these school plans. And they were given time to work on them together as a group. But in addition, they also worked on identifying key data areas that they're going to focus on, because those data areas are going to be reviewed at follow-up meetings to see the progress. And so, you know, it's consistently, partly to me, you know, each school has its different version, but for me, it's an ongoing monthly thing that we will be reviewing. Not just at the administrative level with, with the sites, but even here in our departments within the district office, where this is going to be part of our regular department meetings on every, at least monthly for every agenda.
And I have another wondering in terms of like, for this to be successful, that giving, I just want to, it's more of a wondering and an ask to be able to give our administrators the ability to like, ask a question like, I don't know this thing, so how can, can you provide me support district office on how to achieve XYZ thing that we are struggling with, right? So to make sure that there is an intervention and, oh, actually, and a support for leadership as they are growing through this together with their school communities.
Yes, and that's one of the, the, well, it's a twofold support for administrators. So one, we have our four schools who went through the INCUST equity audits last year, and this year is a professional learning community with those four principals and a coach from INCUST who is working with them to move some of these practices. And that's their PLC, where they can talk about what's working, what's not working, where they need support. So that's one layer of support that we have for administrators. The other layer of support is working with Nicole Anderson and her team with the providing some one-on-one support for each principal. You remember last year, we did the whole equity series. This year, now Nicole and her team are working one-on-one with principals, helping them, how are you leading this work? What challenges do you have? So that they have some one-on-one support from district staff, and then they have some one-on-one support from our support providers. Okay, if we could go on. So that's the school, kind of what the schools are doing. Let's go, and I can give you an overview of what the district office is doing. So the schools are focusing on the instructional piece. These are our pillars. Keep going, Mario. Keep going. We can kind of skip this part and get to the district level plan. Okay, so the district office then is doing plans as well. So we have the schools doing plans and the district office doing plans. The district office staff, all of our divisions, HR, human resources, I mean, human resources, business, food, technology, everybody will then focus on one action in our strategic priorities. So we've chosen looking at student voice, and what does that mean for all of our district office departments? Next slide. Under pillar B, so our partnerships. We're focusing this year on collaboration with our community-based organizations, especially as we implement our community schools grant. We have our MHSA and MHSSA grants that we're working with the county on. Next slide for pillar C. We're making sure that we're using data to learn and improve. So that's a a growth area for all of us. So we're focusing on that, and that's why it's under pillar C, because it's those opportunities for all staff, not just our, our teachers. And then lastly, pillar D is that welcoming environment. And what does that mean for us this year? And what does that mean for us this year? Is that schools are safe, welcoming, there's conduct, that there goes our restorative practices. So these are of the pillars, these are the areas that we're working on. And if you, as you see in each pillar, there's also an equity action that's helping us measure what we're doing. Kobe?
So for creating a welcoming environment, what's our data point for our matrix to find out how we're doing? Is it a survey amongst kids again? Or, and how do you do that through all grade levels?
So that's one of the things that each, each department is, is coming up with. So what would that look like? Yes, surveys will probably be one-way, focus groups might be one-way. But what does that mean for welcoming for students and staff? And so one of the examples that we can share shows you what, how would you measure that if you are food services? Like, what does that mean for a safe and welcoming? Well, making sure that, you know, meals are served at the beginning of the school day, and everybody is aware of where to come to get that meal. So they're trying to, they're, they're working with their division leaders to say, what does that mean for me? How do I see myself in that action? And then those groups will determine, do we want to measure every grade level? Do we want to talk to third, fifth, seventh, ninth? The who is up to the division of whoever is making that particular focus area. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions online that I can't see? Okay.
And I think, I like that you have every department doing this, including, I was seeing about, you know, facilities, like district office, when you walk up. Well, we know it's not ADA compliant, which is not the fault of anyone in this, right? But, you know, how do we also have our facilities be welcoming? So I'm just glad that you're going through every single layer of this, every department of it, because I think that there's many lenses that I'm already thinking of with that.
Yes. So let me show you an example of what that looks like for a non-instructional office.
Great.
Because that's what we shared to help, because we give so many examples, just focus on the school lens, and there's so much more that goes into supporting our kids than just what happens in the classroom. So let's keep going, Mario. This just is the district priorities. Like, we saw the highlighted goals for, for the schools. Think of this as the highlighted goals for the non-schools. Of, these are the four based on our, our pillars instead of the goals. All right, keep going, Mario. So here's, I'm gonna show you a sample from another school district that Performance Fact has worked with. But just as an example, each of these departments made plans, had a, had an action plan of what they're going to do. So we used a sample, keep going. And what the district groups will do is they're gonna think about, what are their projects? Breaking it down and still doing that key task piece that schools did. Like, what are the action steps? Go to the next slide. This is what the district's template will look like, the projects, what's the sub-projects, the key tasks. And just as we ask schools to do, it's when Mutio was referencing that roadmap of, of data, when, when are we starting this task? When are we ending it? And the check-in date to when are we seeing if we're on track? And then who's leading it? And the additional piece is the funding. Is it from ESER? Is it from the A to G grant? So we can, we have so much revenue coming in, but it's very specific. So we want to align it to the work that we're doing.
Just a quick question. Who is tracking all of this?
So we, that's the executive cabinet. So when we come together, so each assistant soup is working with their team to come up with like their own one-pager. And then we have at another meeting, a whole new data tracking cycle that we will share with you of how we're tracking things.
So, but I mean, from the implementation part of it, that's the principals and the site administrators, right? But don't they have to do a little bit of tracking themselves? In, in order to, basically, if I'm, I'm trying to get the process down.
Okay.
You know, the cabinet has its meeting, then they have their managers at the, and the directors to try and process down to the sites. And then the sites have to do their portion of implementation.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So the, in order for the district to get their infomant, infomant, implementation, their information.
Yes.
Then the site, yeah.
No one's throwing alcohol on our campuses.
Right. The, the information has to filter up through the, through the sites, which means that is additional data tracking for the principals.
Yes.
On top of their jobs.
So.
So I'm worried about overload.
So I want to reframe that, because as a site leader, you should always be tracking data.
Okay.
So one of the shifts that we're making this year is setting up how you do that. So one of the things, for example, iReady is a formative assessment. We've provided a tool, so you're not waiting until the end of the year for it to be summative and go, oh, I didn't know. So iReady provides data through, for the principal to look at what's happening with each teacher, to have conversations with those teachers about their data. So this is just putting a system in place that really is part of what your role is, but we're just making it more defined by saying, let's talk about it every four to six weeks. It's already happening. But we're just saying, we're gonna bring you together every four to six weeks to share what you've learned at your site. So it's, it's not a new thing. It's just making it more visible. I think that's really what's going to be the new thing. So let's go to the next slide. Keep going. So here is an example of what the plan would look like for building and grounds. So if one of their pieces, if we think about pillar D, and that's a safe, you know, the climate part of our safe climate and equitable access. So for buildings and grounds, what does that mean to you that you have a safe climate? And, and it's good for kids? It means we have high cleaning standards, okay? So what does that mean? If you want high cleaning standards, what do you do? Well, we've got to focus on employee training. We need to make sure our equipment is upgraded. And we want to have a culture of service of excellence. So then they're gonna break it down, next slide. Next slide. To seeing, this goes to your question of how we would measure that as an example. So if they're saying that we want, we want to know for their customer service of excellence, that was one of the building and grounds pieces. So they said, in this particular district, we're gonna measure the number, the percent of favorable responses from school admin regarding custodial services. So to your point, how will they know? That does mean we're getting feedback in a way we may not have asked. You're the custodian, you take pride in your work, but is anybody else seeing what you see? Or how do we know? How does Terry know how his team is doing from the lens of somebody who's not on his team? So this is the kind of measurement that we're looking, when Mutio described that last part, the scorecard, it's going to be, look, something like this for every department. And what I liked about this process is that it's still the same pillars, but it's how each department sees themselves in equitable access to rigorous responsive instruction. You're like, how does building and grounds? But you're right. If my, as a former teacher and a former administrator, if, if I came in and my room is clean, and the floors are shiny, and it's, you know, that's your environment, and then you're ready to bring your best self to your kid. So we're helping, using this so everybody can see themselves. So this is the overall piece, I'm just looking at time. There's a lot to it, where we definitely will be bringing this back to you more than just today. But I wanted to give you an overview of what's the work that has been done just since you would, we adopted the strategic plan in, in June. Every leader in the district is aware of this plan process. Every leader in the district has started their plan for our schools since they started in, in the summer. They should be finished with their plan by the end of this month. Our district office staff is completing their plans by November first. And then we're gonna be what's called critical friends, and look at each other's plans, and say, can, by what you wrote, do I know what you're trying to achieve? And then the goal is for January, we're ready to launch and be able to start tracking the data. But this is new. I, I know I'm, I'm like bringing in something that, again, people have done, but maybe not in a manner that is, helps us be visible and transparent with our actions. And so I wanted to give them, like, let's get the first semester to get this done. The, the feedback we've received so far is people get it, they see it, and they're like, yes, I can see myself in the strategic plan. And that really is my goal for year one implementation. Do you see yourself in the plans? And as I start, probably, what is it, next week, Yorgos, going to coffee with the principals at every, every school site? That's my, my, uh, starting the, the work with the community of letting them know the thoughtfulness and the intentionality that our school leaders, our district leaders, and our, our staff at all levels are thinking about, how do I bring my best self to my job in a way that supports students to get to that portrait of a graduate? So that's what we're trying to do, and any questions?
All right, to see everybody on there, will you?
Yeah, I'm done, we, we can.
Stop, Sharon.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
I'm really excited for this, and I think that, I like hearing you describe it, and that we are all, I think it helps to ensure that the district, everyone sees themselves as part of the team, and that we're all here together. And, and I really appreciate the way that's being done. Excited to see it moving forward.
I like what you said about critical friends, to remember that we're friends, because I think, you know, it's hard to, to, might be hard to collect some of the data. And I think it's important that we have this data, but I think it's, it's also important to remember that we support each other, and as we do this, to really be mindful of how to, you know, that if something doesn't feel that it's supportive, how do we go back and reassess so that we make it all supportive?
And, and I think that speaks to what Jackie's question was about creating a safe space for you to say, I'm not sure how to do this.
Yeah.
Or, for us, it's been very helpful working with Performance Fact, because we are able to see examples of what these connections and alignment looks like in districts that have already gone through this. So, and then being able to show samples of the work to our team. So we're not asking you to do something that is not doable. We know it's able to be done. What do we, want to make sure? Give you support and resources. And again, that's the benefit of having our principals working with INCUST and, and understanding this equity work, allowing them to continue to work with Nicole, bring in our equity task force. This is new language, and you have to be able to ask your questions and know that there will be no judgment. And that's why we're trying this rollout to make sure that it is what we need it to be, but wanting everybody to be sure that this is support. This is what support looks like. And as a principal, I would always tell my, my staff, my goal, well, number one, I would never forget what being a teacher was like. That's, that's number one. So start with, what did I feel like as a teacher? Then what did I feel like as a principal? And then when I became a director and supported principals, I said, I want you to always know, I'm looking at it through the lens of what does support look like and feel like? Because you could think you're being supportive, but if I don't feel that that's support, then that's not support. So that is really what we want to do. What a support look and feel like? And when you get to the feeling piece, that's when people are able to soar.
Great. Thank, thank you for that, Dr. Hildreth, hence the, like, the question around communities of practice and safe spaces and this new work. And we are just coming out of like, okay, like, let's remember what we, we planned at the beginning. Remember why you joined us, Dr. Hildreth. Remember the conversations that we had with Deborah and Nicole when we were part of that first equity cohort. And let's not, let's not forget, right? Because I think it's easier post-pandemic to get caught up. And I'm so excited for us to come back to our why and our vision of equity. And then, and you know, and we also, and we know this, right? We value what we measure.
Yeah.
We value what we measure. And if we don't have data, we can't identify the areas where we need to invest more time, more resources, you know, more talent, if you will, to support the vision of those local leaders at the school sites. Right? And so, and also creating a space of, I don't know how to collect that. And maybe somebody else can help you collect that. Maybe collect in a different way, right? To, so out the gate saying, like, hopefully, we're creating that environment where there is safety and saying, Dr. H, like, I, I, I want to, but blah, 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 blah. I need help here.
So just a quick question, has the, has Nicole and Deborah had an opportunity to work with our site administrators or site, you know, our principals and APs since the start of the school year?
Not directly, yeah.
Okay.
So just in the groups?
So, okay, so in, okay, in the group. So basically, they're at the stage where they did their start-of-the-year meeting with all of them combined, but not individually.
Yes, they haven't started the one-on-one format. We wanted to give the principals the first month to get school started.
Right, to get that on.
And then we'll be able to schedule, and they know the support is, is, is coming, that that's part of their support for the year. The, the INCUST work has already started those, but because that's caring, also caring over with those four principals. And then the equity audits for the six or seven schools that did not have equity audits last year started this week, River City.
Really?
River City, this.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
What, tell me the acronym again for INCUST, I just.
Okay, National, National. Transformation.
That's right. I'm like, National California.
Yeah, National, of course. I mean, that could be a lot of things. Okay. If there are no other questions? Yes.
And I just have one more piece. When I wrote down the first goal, the goals you're working on, goal two, three, four, five. And in terms of framing it for our community, I was thinking about the ninth and 10th graders being on track to graduate. And so I know our graduation rates in the past were higher than the state. I don't, is that still an accurate statement?
Still accurate.
Okay, so.
We haven't gotten last year's data, but up to that.
Okay, okay. Because I know it's something we prided ourselves on in the past. But as a family, so as you think about going to your principal coffees and others, you know, I would think, well, of course, my child's gonna graduate. That sounds like a low bar. And so I think even adding the piece of, you know, graduate, what does that mean? Graduate ready for their career, ready for college? So I would just make sure that we maybe add, are mindful of that robust language too, so that it doesn't sound as though it's not setting the high, far high for our kids. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Just giving them that additional detail. And also, for us, it means, when we're talking about being data-driven, that graduation rate is an average. And so we want to break that down. And is every student group at the district average? And if not, there goes our equity actions, you know? So it's really being sure that we are being a data-driven system at all levels, with the schools, to your point, looking at data, whether that's iReady or formative, grade distribution, Ds and Fs, A to G access, there's so many things, which means, this is the reason, this is a five-year plan, because there's so much to do. But with good tracking, good transparency. Um, but with good tracking, good transparency, and most of all, good commitment from everyone in the system, we can get there. Thank you, Mu Tiu, for.
Thank you.
And giving us uh, some great tools. And you know, we'll keep working and looking forward to setting up the time for us to. Come back to the trustees with our updates and the scorecards and. Got extra information in your um, binder that we didn't go over with the equity scorecards, but. Ongoing. Living, we're, we're gonna treat you like we do those plans, like this isn't just something that we want you to say, oh, that's cute. We want you to.
It is cute though. It is cute.
But we want it to be your living document as we go around this, on this roadmap. Keep your notes in here, follow-up items, because. Your, I, I come to you with the lens of not being in the weeds like we are. And so your questions to your point about what parents might ask, that, that's helpful. So please keep that going. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mu Tiu. We'll talk soon.
Yes, very soon.
Um, I'm gonna put it out there, because I talked about the golden bell word. I think this is something we should actually submit a golden bell award for, FYI. Just putting it out there.
I'm ready. I'm, I, you know, I said, like, give me, give me a year to, like, get it, get it going, but um. You know, I'm so thrilled at where we are as a system to only be in September. And people already talking about their data. They're like, what are we gonna measure? How are we gonna do this? Thinking in our, you know, our, well, who's doing that? Well, what's the date? I mean, all the things we want to happen to hear that. Beginning to happen more and more in the system is, is.
And the horizontal and vertical integration.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that this was worked on last year, the hard, I feel like last year was the hardest year, actually even hard. So I think it's even.
I'm gonna double down on the golden bell award. Please do write so we can like say.
Let's go. All right, with that, I am now going to turn it over to part two, where I've done most of the talking. And now it is the we talking, because this is the point where Deborah is going to. Um, help lead us in thinking about what are our actions as a governance team? And bringing us back to where we left off in March of 2022. And now it's time to come back. So Deborah, welcome, and it's good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Great to see everyone in the room. And uh, I am so impressed with your strategic plan. I have viewed several of them. Many of them is, they're very boring. And uh, but you guys, again, this is why we say you guys are a model team. You should be very pleased with just what your superintendent shared and the individual who put together your strategic plan. To walk through it. She did exactly what you guys said you wanted her to do. When you guys set the equity policy in place, when you did that statement, that statement drives the work. This is an example of the work, get, you know, she interpreted what you needed. Interpreted to her staff, and now they're doing it. They're rolling up their sleeves to get it done. So you should be very pleased. Um, and I don't think this is going to be a, a document that's going to be put down. It's gonna be one of your favorite tools. Your favorite toys, remember we always talk about that? I printed it in color and in black and white, because I didn't want to write on my colored one. I wanted to keep that one, because that's going to be a model.
Because it is cute.
It is, but, but it's so clear. And even though I didn't dial, I didn't print the, the long version, but when you were showing components of it. It is so user-friendly. It's very clear on um, you know, what it is. And, and it's, you know, it uh, really gets a clear understanding of, of what's expected. And so, yeah, so I, I am so pleased with that. Got this big bug in my room and. Been a little distracted. I'm not used to the southern bugs that are down here, but. Um, so, yeah, and the questions you guys were asking, I was kind of jotting them down. You were asking the right questions. You know, even when you get into the how, um, you know, that gets a little bit below the line, but the, what you're talking about is below the line. But always kind of step back and say, how can I pose it in the what? What process do you have in place to cover um, who's going to be in charge of what? So that the superintendent can determine who those individuals will be. Cause the key thing with the board, of course, is making sure that it gets done, right? And, and when they report out to you. So everyone should have, and I, I didn't plan on um, putting the document. Uh, on the screen, but you have the uh, the equity action plan in front of you. I don't know if we have to put it on the screen.
Yes, and the last, it's the last page in your notebook.
So I may not be able to read it.
Yeah, you gotta looked at it. Yeah. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And so if we gotta go through this. I probably want like a five minute, can I have like a two-minute break? Just gotta look at it real quick, because I have to handle something really quick. Just one second, just a two-minute. Hi, back. Oh, great, you got it up. Thank you guys for allowing me that little break there. Okay, all right. Thank you for that little break. I appreciate it. So, uh, yeah. This document, this strategic plan, I just wanted to make sure we're like. And of course, as you know, we've been on, you went through your whole series. And we're at that point now that we were told at the very beginning that we would share with you. The final document that really helps the board, once you, we've taken you through the equity series. And because we always talk about those eight characteristics, not only of, of effective board, but also. The eight characteristics when you're um, on the journey of equity. So this document really. Highlights those eight characteristics, but it also aligns it with, what does it mean for the governing team? Just like on the strategic plan, when your superintendent was going through. Everyone has their own action plan on who's going to do what, what does it look like, what needs to be done? This document is going to help the board stay focused on the work. He, you know, we will also be able to um, give you another document like this, but it has a third column. Which will align with the governance core book when we do the book study next year. On what, you know, making the connection with that governing work too. But right now, we're going to focus on when we talk about the. The board commits to that vision of equity. Yes, you guys are there, you've proven it, you have your equity statement. You have those high expectations which showed in your um, strategic plan, what the staff is going to do. They're addressing any concerns that will be there to make sure that the high expectations of what the board has set. Is being realized at the district level. And so again, you develop and adopt that, that statement, which you've done. So that's a checkmark for you. But every time you engage, and I like how the plan is divided up in those four pillars, you know, following that kind of structure is so easy. And, and especially the part I was so impressed with was how even um, you know, all type of stuff. Not even in the classroom, but other, how did you call it? Uh, the district office staff, and it, it could be full service providers, it could be the custodial individuals. How do they fit in this plan with equity? So being able to connect it in those four pillars, so everyone knows what they're going to do. And so really, the way your strategic plan is, is focused on, you know, pillar A, B, C, and D, which just so happens. That we're four areas. And so again, that's going to guide your work. You continue to see how the budget runs through all of it. Human resources, because there is the um, staffing who has to do it. There's still that teaching and learning component and that, that the school climate. When you look at your um, those pillars, you see how. All of these areas are covered. And I know that that was very intentional, because as we always shared with you. When you stay focused on those four areas, you are hitting everything in the district that the board needs to be um, um, focused on. Aligning those priorities with the superintendent's goals and, and objectives. I'm sure when that plan was put together. The superintendent is thinking about evaluation, because this is what you're going to be held accountable for, same as your staff, right? And then an align, aligning those four priorities with, with your agenda. Every time you put your agenda together, I believe you guys already do this. It is connected to a plan. Uh, if, if it's going to be about what's going on in pillar A. It needs to be noted on your agenda so that as the community is uh, listening, they can follow along very easily. Um, knowing what you're focused on. So what, what are your thoughts with just the, um, the first one? Really focusing on the commitment to the vision and these four bullets. Uh, about, you know, this will be your um, plan to stay focused. What are your thoughts here? Do you feel real comfortable in this area? Let's jump on in.
Do you, do you want us to answer collectively or?
Nope, you can just jump in. Go ahead, Jackie. Nicole, you, go ahead.
Deborah?
Go ahead, Jackie.
Like, um, I think I feel comfortable at, you know, the strategic plan is just well-aligned to this. I think we're already doing it, right? As we have developed the goals and in co-creation with Dr. Hildreth and what we just saw. I, I think, I want to say like, I, I feel like, and would love to hear from other board members, is that in that first box, I feel like all four can be checked.
Agree. We're nodding.
You're nodding, I can see you.
Like, I'm like, what is that like?
And, and you guys should be proud, because you, again, you are far further ahead. And you understand that now you have this strategic plan. I, I, you guys have no idea how excited I was to read this and, and watch the presentation. Because it is so aligned. Because what did the gentleman say? I thought I heard him say twenty-seven percent of people don't follow? Did he say something like that? Did you guys pick up on that?
I don't know the, the percent, but I know he has shared in the past that this is the work, that he's done many strategic plans. And many organizations, whether it's school systems or non-school systems, have strategic plans. But then they don't go into actions. That's the hard part.
Yeah, so, and, and I wasn't surprised when he said that it's unfortunate, you go through all of that work. And then the staff, that's when the staff will start feeling, well, they have this plan, nobody's gonna help, hold us accountable, so why do we want to do it? But the way you have it laid out, I really believe your, your staff is, it sounds like it's already ready to go. And the board will be ease. It would be very easy to monitor, because at this point, that's what you guys are doing. You're, you're monitoring the work. And so you're right, you guys would check off all those boxes, but it, it helps you always to make sure you go back and say, okay, are we still aligning? Our agenda with, uh, you know, our pillars or, or, or things of that day, just making sure you're staying focused. Um, and so the second one, of course, is that share a strong belief in the value. And value about equity, you know, student learning, their ability to learn, no one's lowering the bar at all. So of course, you continue to set those high expectations for staff. Uh, so when staff is giving you um. Reporting out from, based upon the work that they're doing. I'm sure it will show that the high, the expectations are there. They're, they're high. You guys will be able to poll, ask questions, you know, what's the product, progress that we're going, where were we? Remember, we'll get down to the data piece, but data is always flowing through. Everything has to be measurable. And, and so, you know, really paying attention to that. Uh, revisit, establish or revisit your board goals all the time in your equity statement. That statement, of course, is that document that's going. That toy that's going to stay very um, no, you know, right there on top of all of your work, that you always have it in front of you. To make sure you stay focused on what you said. And everything should be aligned. The presentations from staff should be aligned with. Uh, what you, you know, your goals and what the superintendent has laid out to say around this time, or the timelines on there. Everything was so crisp and clear. Um, and I, again, believe that. Your superintendent and staff has made that document easy for you guys to read it and understand it. And making sure that you're doing what you have to do, because you're saying from the board's level. We do have a strong belief system, we value um, equity. And this is how we're going to show you each time. So that the community can see it, the staff can see the results of what they're doing. Um, so yeah, you got, you guys are just right on target there. Identify a system, go ahead, jump on in.
Can I uh, interject just a, a piece, looking, looking at number two and, and thinking about, um, you know, that. That second box that's in number two that says um, establish and revisit board goals and equity statement. I just want to call our attention to page twenty-three in your book. Um, that's page twenty-three of our long strategic plan, Deborah, just for your, since you don't have the binder. But just for your, your knowledge, and I know you've seen it, the equity principles are the equity states. That is the equity statement that the board worked on. And so one of the things that I'm going to ask as you are interacting with community members. That you kind of keep these as the things you talk about. So that's one of the things that we, in our communication plan. Um, when we're responding to, to parents who might have a variety of concerns. We're trying to start our responses with one of these um, principles. WUSD is committed, if they're talking about, if they're concerned about. Um, the way a student is being treated in the classroom as an example. So we're committed to healthy relationships with everybody. And then go into whatever it is. Or if they're saying that, you know, I feel discriminated against, I'm looking at number three, well, WUSD. We ensure everybody is valued and accepted, and we embrace their uniqueness. And then go into your response. So that's one way that you, as the board. Can show that we are living, that statement wasn't just the twenty-one, twenty-two school year task. That it really was an ongoing piece that we truly believe. And that's one way for. The community to see, wow, they all keep talking about those equity principles. Yes, we do, because that's what we believe.
Absolutely. Great suggestion. And, and I'm sure the board will take that long document. And um, you know, really keep it in the forefront so that you can, and, and that is so key of engaging with the community. Because they don't have all of this information. Um, and, and they believe, you know, you're modeling, and that's going to be a key thing. They believe. What you, they see more than, you know, you could tell them, but they really want to see it modeled. So thank you for bringing that, that um, forward. I really appreciate that. Um, I didn't, remember the, the uh, identify system and change approach. Remember the sixth condition with the article? This again, always, that's another resource that you will continuously use. To know that there needs to be, you focusing on these condition of changes of that, that's requiring. You know, you're beginning the work. So now it could be sometimes where there's going to be a little pushback, or people are as ready as perhaps they thought they were. Um, but it sounds like everyone's going to be ready to launch in January, I believe. Superintendent with the work. So this is when the board, you may start seeing different things shifting. And the superintendent may be coming back with different types of updates. Just say, well, maybe we need, we're, perhaps they're not ready. Cause again, you will, the staff is ready, the, the, the leaders of the work now wants to start getting pushed down. You'll see how ready everyone else is too. And so, board, you will be, you may be hearing different type of updates. Or say, well, you know what, we're gonna have to slow this. We're gonna have to slow this down a little bit, we may not make it this, you know, we thought we were going to get it done in this quarter. So that's where that that um collaborative going into number three, you know, that collaborative of relationship of working with the superintendent and really understanding that. You guys have your equity statement and your division, and you're always going to be modeling that doing this equity work, because again, equity is woven through everything that you're doing. So um those strong communications, um structured to inform and engage both at internal and external stakeholders and achieving all of the district's goals. And so these checkbox here, again, fostering a transparent governance culture, where all the governance team members receive consistent information. The superintendent seems, has shown what I have viewed, making sure that you are well informed. Her staff is well informed, is is informing you. And and making sure that you have all the information that you need to make your your decisions. And I know you guys don't have a problem asking for more if you need it, which is, which is okay. So would you want to continue to communicate those goals or priorities and actions? Again, like superintendent mentioned, when you're engaging with the stakeholders, it is the board's job to be the one um communicating to the community, because the superintendent is teaching up to you, letting you know the landscape of the um educational landscape. And in turn, you communicate that with with um your your stakeholder. So that, and I'm sure you're going to have this very accessible on your website, so that people can really go to it and and um review this. And at the board meeting, you will always be talking about it, so it won't be that they just have to go to the website, they will actually see it in action. Um another checkbox here communicates the equity statement through multiple communications. And I'm just wondering, remember during one of our sessions where we were talking about um having a different way of of um uh when you have the equity statement, and then sometime, I think Nicole had given you a link of a really fancy way, another district did it, whether you could have kids' voice. Have you kind of thought about a different way of communicating the equity statement more in a in a child version or anything like that? Have you guys given any thought to that?
So we we have not with the equity statement, and I I appreciate you bringing that back. Um we have started a communication strategy of talking about the district or things that are happening. The importance of attendance, for example, it's attendance awareness month. And uh your goals has gone out and interviewed different stakeholders. But this is a good reminder to add this piece, because that's really what it's about.
Yep, because it could be just um pictures, like what does equity mean to you? And ask a, you know, any a a child, what does it mean to you? It may be just something different, but you're still involving everyone, and everyone started, everyone's gonna start talking about what equity is. And have fun doing that, you know? So yeah, just wanted to remind you of that, because we had just a brief conversation about that, that student friendly um version of it. Uh provide direction, go ahead.
I think our staff is gonna love it, I'm excited about that. We have um, I I was at one of the schools today, and the, they were learning about empathy. The little, like, it was so cute, little elementary students, what is empathy, the teacher was asking, and they were like, asking if you're okay. Yes, and I was like, I'm just so proud of this district, I think it's, it was awesome, they they were so cute. But I I feel like we've really embraced, started to embrace things like, you know, the social emotional learning and um equity pieces, so I think this will be good stuff.
Yeah, and because remember, we always say we want student voice, so always think of, take advantage of any opportunity to actually have student voice, we as adults, we don't have to be the ones to come up with it, engage your students. Yeah, yeah.
And don't think that they can't, uh they can't uh em- embrace those concepts or understand those concepts, I thought it was amazing, you know.
Absolutely, they can, they absolutely can, yeah.
Sorry, I was thinking, they, we just had this great student video, which was different, it was a tour of the district. But you know, this could even be done by students, you know, a video of it too, and what it means and.
Absolutely, very creative way.
To get some ideas, I start my my student advisory group, I think, next week. But it's one just to bring to them, like, how could we bring that to life? And just hear from them and make that authentic, you know, from the from the bottom up, but we're we're really, I think of the district, we're the bottom, the top should be the kids, so.
Yeah, they can come up, how to teach the rest of the district about it.
So Dr. Hildreth, normally those advisors are high school level, I would encourage us to maybe have a a different advisory for our kids and elementary school kids. So I know it's more kind of time off your hands, but to Deborah's point, is like the different levels of understanding and how we can engage different levels of, you know, different grade levels of students.
Yeah, and even think about just technology wise, I don't know. Uh but some districts who are really doing this equity work too, they start their meetings with showing like a one minute video. And it's about, and the kids are actually, and it could be something about, so two kids sitting down, like, just having a chat with each other and be sitting on the floor, tell me what it means to you, and they could act it out or whatever. But it's such a nice way to um open up your meetings and showing that you are focused on students. So that's just a thought, just a thought.
That is a good idea, when we're in closed session and everyone's just sitting there watching the streaming.
Yeah, absolutely. So to think about here, again, any of these boxes, I don't necessarily have to go through every one of them, but as far as the three, you, because you, what what do you think about, well, your task force? Um leveraging um your uh your task for, levering an equity task force to gather feedback. And you guys don't don't have a task force, I'm trying to remember.
Right, we did it last year, we now are launching it, we had our first equity task force meeting last week. And um Nicole and um Shelley, Dr. Shelley. Okay, were the facilitators, and so it was very exciting. There were a lot of questions of, you know, we we started with that um um going through the history of public education that we did here, where you could see it's, you know, the system was not designed for everyone to be successful. And um they asked questions like, well, what if we need to work beyond this year? And I'm thinking, wow, we're just in month one, and you're already thinking about, may not be done, I'm thinking that. But it was good to have that, you know, from within, so we're starting with creating safe spaces is really, uh it's a place where you have to have trust. So we're starting with staff, um admin, teachers classified, getting them um with really our our this task force and um our middle grades task force, starting with staff, and then we'll add in parents or community. But we want to set the bar for the people on the ground to feel safe and tell us what they need, and be willing to share what's working and what's not working. And then bring others in and be sure that, yeah, this is not just a one-time deal, but it is a meeting, and so we are meeting so far once a month, and it was ninety minutes, and they asked for two hours. So we're like, okay.
That's awesome, and so that's, that's the great thing, of course, and you guys know, working with Nicole's team, she can dispatch people on every level. And so, I love that, so that the whole district is being um involved in it and the community. So this again, uh board is where you just monitor, you you want to be engaged, you want to hear what's going on and see how it it is aligned with everything that um you expect of your superintendent. Um and anything that comes out of, anytime, of course, you have a equity task force uh um that's pulled together, you're going to get feedback. So you're going to have to be prepared for some feedback, um because we don't know all the answers. Uh but we definitely need to ask the individuals who, if they may see it differently. You know, all of this work that's being done, now they get to see, well, did you think about this group? So again, this is something for board that you will kind of monitor as well. Those listening sessions that will come out of the task force as well, people will, you ask the question, that people will share information. And so that is so important, that is all around building relationships. Uh because when it gets tough, because it is, it's not if, it is, it's not when, it's really, i- if, it's when it gets tough, we know it's going to. Um and you have those relationships, the conversations will be a little bit different. Because the board, you're you're, you have given the superintendent and and staff a a I want to say directive, but not in a negative way, that's a good thing. Your instructions to move this work forward, and you're supporting it all the way. And so the this is, this is what we need to build those strong relationships. So again, when it, when the times get tough, and they don't agree, at least you can have civil conversations about it, so. Let's think, look, go down to number four.
Can I just quickly?
Absolutely, jump on in.
So I was wondering, since I'm not on the two by two anymore, I don't know whether or not we've had the opportunity to um discuss our equity policy with um with the city council on the two by two. And at the county, county as well.
We have not?
I was gonna, would you, would you do that there, though? That was, I was actually I'm glad you asked, I was like, maybe I shouldn't ask this out loud. Um but would you leverage it at a city two, but those meetings are so short, or would you ask for meetings with the council members and you know, how would you recommend leveraging community partners to advance equity policy?
You know, I think for me, it's, I would rather have the entire city council, entire board of supervisor, right? Um be aware of it, because I'll be honest, I think that the two by twos are business oriented versus having a a an unveiling, if you will, of Doc- Dr. Hildreth actually presenting at a board of supervisor, and presenting at a a a a city council meeting, right? Like, I don't, I think we have friends who would request it to be agendized, for example. Um or just as a public comment, like, that's just something to think about with Erin. And with um, you know, county supervisor, I guess, about how do we, how do we get that done? You know.
President Wong, would that be the question at the two by two, just a brief one then? We, you know, here, here's a copy of our strategic plan, we'd love to share this at the city council meeting, you know, on process, bring it that way.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's through the two by two, or just asking directly via email to Erin and the mayor.
Yeah. We got one of my, in my meetings with Erin. Um because I know, for example, the city has gone through a strategic plan process themselves.
Plan, but I don't know if it's like an equity strategic plan.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yeah, specifically, I and I'm like, Jackie, you need to be in front of them when it happens. And so it depends on what Shelley and Nicole are doing with these, uh because I'm sure that's a part of the plan too, so. Um I I do think it needs to be in front, because you want them to know they're stakeholders too.
Yeah, yeah, and their vision, they said they want, they want, West Sacramento to have great schools. I actually noticed that in the chamber the other day, I'm like, well, interesting.
Interesting.
Without good schools.
Correct.
I'm like, interesting, so we're gonna go back to your mission statement. And this is what, it's it's so, using their language and their goals to say, and by the way, but this is how we have and they were actually part of our core team and all of that, so it might not be bad, because Mayor Guerrero was part to my knowledge, she helped actually a lot at all those core meetings with Chief Strange and everybody else. So maybe just ask her, like, hey, like, you worked so hard on this, would love to present, right?
Yeah.
Or another thought is, is one of the things, a a strategy that uh Mu Tzu, I think, had shared when he was presenting to the board when we had um for adoption, and he was sharing that that team, the alignment team, which is the community partners, that you have maybe a meeting each semester with that alignment team sharing your updates, because then that's connecting with them, and then they you can guide them into saying, wouldn't you, doesn't, don't you think more than just you should know, so that hearing it, so that might be a way for them to continue to be connected to the district, since we've already started that relationship. Let's have that as a process to continue with that group, and then build some more um stakeholder engagement through that alignment team.
I'd like that, I'd like that suggestion, Dr. Hildreth, just build the infrastructure that we we, how we engage them and continue with them.
And then your, your job and 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 board is also just to make sure, remember, we've talked about who are the marginalized stakeholder groups, who who don't you hear from? We know the lame ones all the time, but who's not at the table? And you may, they may think, well, you know, they don't want to hear from me, or I don't have time. You may have to go be the ones to tap people on the shoulder, and say, hey, we really want your input, you know, so kind of think about that. So if you look at the accountability, it is all, it is very long, you know? Um but it it is so necessary, you you can't say enough about making sure that uh it is your accountability driven, because just like you mentioned with the strategic plan, it can end up being something that's just sitting on the shelf, is not being done, because people could, not saying your staff would do this, but I'm just saying, it can happen where if you're right under the radar, if no one's asking any questions, or saying, how you doing, or checking in, that I'm just going to continue just to do what else I've been doing. And and so you always want to make sure, hey, I want everyone accountable, making sure everyone has what they need. So again, you develop your 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 policies that support those priorities, and then applying the the policy to to guide it, you know? All of the policy work, you know, the questions that you have to your superintendent, that agenda building, and even your decision-making, all, you think about accountability and connecting it with all of the prioritizing your governing work, and and then, of course, measuring it. There are so many areas about around accountability, that this will help keep the board focused on making sure, when you jump down to where to provide direction on the hiring of contractors. You think about who's presenting um to you, and if you're looking at it through an equitable lens, you'll say, if it's curriculum, um do we see our children represented in this uh curriculum? Um is it aligned with our priorities? This is where you use this as your lens, and and making sure when you're doing, you know, the contractors come before you. Um reviewing all of your policies, as we've talked about before, this is the lens. Um policy-driven question, remember, the what type of question, the overarching purpose of of your policy and practice, all of this will help you focus on being accountability-driven. It's not questioning people as far as you're not doing your job or anything like that. It's just ensuring that, do you have what you need? Because at the end of the day, everyone will be held accountable for this journey that we're on, because the kids, it, all of this is put, being put together for all of your students. And so making sure that you have metrics in place to, for accountability. So is any one of these just really stand out with you? Uh do you feel that this is uh will help you stay focused? Because it is so much, but this is how important accountability, accountability-driven board is. Uh it it is so important, what are your thoughts there?
Yeah, Deborah, I I was wondering, since we did, we did just develop our equity policy, how frequently do we need to go back and revise and amend it?
Well, because you just did, it it you won't have to revise or amend, it's gonna be a while, I think, after the superintendent and their staff really started pushing this strategic work, this is where other things may bubble to the top that perhaps you didn't think of. So probably, definitely not right now until
After the first year.
The first year, because we did the statement, and then we we have um like the equity policy, but it's it's kind of generic. So after we get through this first year and and the learnings, we'll know, okay, kind of what more meat to kind of put in there.
It's more like an annual review.
Yes, yes, and one of the other things that we're going to be doing with the, we have a a policy subcommittee. Mario, is it this week or next week? Next Wednesday?
Okay.
So I'm glad to see these policy-driven questions, because that was going to be, not going to, but that is part of our agenda. Is adding, what are the equity guiding questions that we need to look at as we're developing or revising policies? Especially as the agenda is to talk about the dress code. So, right, but let's look, who are we missing? Who do we see? So that's part of that agenda, and then the goal with, once we get it through the policy committee, begin to have those conversations with school leaders as they develop policies and practices at the school level. That there, even for tea, what are your classroom routines related to homework?
Yes.
If you think about some of these guiding questions, you'll be able to go, oh, I'm there's a certain group that may not, may have a reason why they're not turning in their homework. That these questions will help you to identify, but of course, that's me and my ambitious thinking. So many things in my head, which is why I do So many things in my head, which is why I do not sleep at night.
There's so much good work, so much good work to do, but we're going to start.
It, it is.
In the process where it should start, which is the policy subcommittee.
The policy, because your, your equity policy is not finished, right?
We did the equity statement, but the equity policy is not finished.
Right, cause I have my handwriting all on it. So, but I think, again, now that you have this strategic plan document. You can, that can be kind of put right by this and, you know, and this action plan. And look at some things that are, are missing. You guys already mentioned several things last time we were together that you were gonna add to it. And so again, now that you see with, with the larger document of the strategic plan. Where it really goes deep into the, you know, how it's being done. You guys are gonna see that you're gonna have these aha moments, like yes, this is exactly, yes, this is, this is it. So absolutely, and those questions will definitely, um, be key. And it will be like, like you say, Cody, a yearly, just kind of review it. If you have a, have a policy committee, you can just check in and, and, um, and review it every year. So it gets down to, and I know we're a little bit over, but we're gonna go just until about, um, let's see, seven more minutes. Uh, eight, eight or nine more minutes. Um, data savviness, if that's okay with you, hopefully. Um, we've talked a lot about data and you guys are very much aware of the data. Uh, that you have, just understanding, do we, um, uh. Yep, keep going. That one was a long.
Way more.
Keep going. There you go. I told you that, um, accountability was some page and a half. You think about that again, embracing and monitoring both types of data. Um, the good and the bad, you have to take it. And as you, the, the staff beginning to do the work, um, next year. There's going to be some different kind of data that's going to come through, whether, um, through surveys or whatever. People were saying, wow, now that we've put this in place, some things are being revealed. So just making sure you're, um, staying in that space of asking for the data. And I'm sure when your superintendent and staff reports out, that's what they will be giving you quarterly or however, uh, when, when it's necessary. Um, participating in those equity walks, I'm not sure, um, if you guys have done those yet. We did.
I guess that's where we're starting.
You're starting, okay.
We have four schools that have gone through equity audits. They're working with, um, Incus to, who provided a report that had recommendations. And that's what the, the four schools who went through that process last year. They're working with, uh, Incus coach on prioritizing which recommendation for this year. Align to the strategic plan. And then the remaining schools will go through the equity audit process this year. And then focus on those recommendations in this, begin the, the, the recommendations in the spring.
But I would, um, just add, uh, Dr. Hildreth, years ago with CSBA, we did. Um, an equity walk with school board members through. And so when you have those set times, um, just letting the board know and maybe a board member or two could come.
Oh, okay.
Do it too. And I know it gives a different lens and you, it's a trust as you talked about. And so it needs to be, you know, really set up that we are not a gotcha moment, trusting, but, uh, having the board involved too in that, I think. Might be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and you remember what you got, what instructions you guys received when you went through it, right? Observation and so absolutely, so as long as you guys remember. And of course. The front mode, you know, because.
Deborah, to your point, we have new board members who didn't have that training and even.
Yeah.
Or it's like me who just forget, like it probably good to refresh. Our goal and our training if, if we so choose to do that. I mean, I'll.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely say before you, if, if you have the opportunity, most definitely have a review on. Um, expectations of, of what the board, because anytime a board walks into a classroom, you know, you're the authority. And we definitely don't want to be disruptive, but you can gather, you're observing and, and, and just knowing what to look for. But you're right, it's a new, this is a new board, so. Absolutely. Uh, let's go down to six and, cause I wanna be, I don't hold you too long. Um, aligning and monitoring and sustaining your resources. So. Uh, maintain that high standard of focus on your priorities and miss, uh, uh, miss your budget challenges. Everyone has challenges, so you may have to, again, continue to be good stewards of your budget, make allocating effectively. There may be some new things revealed that you may have to do differently and, and definitely have conversations about that. And again, it's not just the, the financial, it's, it's people too. So, um, if your superintendent comes to you and say, look, with this wonderful strategic plan that we have. Um, I guess some capacity issues here, what say you, board, when I put forward the recommendation? You know, you have to be prepared because you want this plan to be successful. And as you're a monitor, you want to make sure the superintendent and her staff will have everything they need to be successful. And of course, that support and hiring and, um, when, I don't know, your equity officer lands on, you guys are, tell me where you, are you thinking about doing that? Um, having an equity.
So very excited, the board did just approve, um, uh, for us to move forward with. We have director of equity, uh, diversity and in inclusion. So I'm so excited to be able to post that. And then the, the board has also, um, approved a contract that was on the last meeting. That allows for, to your point, a capacity review of our ed services team and our HR. We have a lot of goals and things we want to be done, want to do. And we want to be sure that we're setting ourselves up for success. And so we have, um, uh, working with a consultant who's going to be doing that deep dive. We're doing the equity deep dive at our schools and I want to make sure our school leaders know what we're asking of you. We're asking for ourselves. And so by doing this review, our capacity review of, starting with special ed. HR and ed services. I'm excited to get that recommendation report as the principals have the recommendations for their equity audits. We'll be able to see, what do we need to, um, set ourselves up for that, uh, portrait of a graduate? That's what, that's what I keep in my mind.
Yeah, you guys are putting, you're positioning yourself to get there. So that, that is great to hear. That is great to hear. I, I really love that. I just weren't, weren't sure where you were. Because I'm glad that the board supports that because superintendent, you know, you can't do it all. Um, and I have to remind you, you cannot do all this by yourself. So. And it's okay to delegate and have another person who will be the point person. So again, kudos to you, Stacey. And you guys continue to remind her that, right?
Right.
Any other thoughts on just about, uh, six? Um, posing the questions that inform us the progress. You guys are really good at asking good questions. Uh, and so you just continue that and give the superintendent direction to leverage this whole, the whole equity task force. So let's go down to seven. Um, you lead as a united team with you guys, definitely model that. Um, building that culture from the top down. Uh, really will support this work that you're doing. As you know, you want to create the best, um, environment that people. Not only want to go to, the kids, students want to come to school there, but staff wants to work there. And people want to come and, and work there. So the board is setting that culture and making sure the communication is still there. Because you're, you're doing a lot of work, but it's such important work. So you don't ever want those lines to be blocked at all of communicating. So just, just continue to do that. And, and, and as you have shown, you know, you stand by your decisions that you make. You're being very thoughtful in your process. And so always just remind yourself, when you have to get to a decision. Is this something that we can live with? Are we making the decisions based upon not just what we need today? But what about five years out? Well, is this gonna help our students five year out? Um, so you just continue to do that, um, engaging with each other and having those, um, open, honest conversation. Creating that condition, you know, to allow the superintendent to, to function as that leader that she is. So. Just continue to do that. And then number eight, um, you do your team development. You guys are good at, uh, having, uh, working with different consultants and really helping you process this work. Uh, as you continue to do all the other district work, um, the district does not slow down just because you want to focus on this work. Uh, but it is allowing you to make the connections because it's not just another thing to do, it is what you do. So definitely stay engaged and focus in the different types of, um, um, educational, uh, development. For the board that you can through CSBA and continue working with us. And hopefully next year, beginning of Jan, January or so, we can start the, uh, the governance core book. Uh, that really will align with this work. And just really focus on what true governance look like at, at, at the highest level, strategic focus. You have a strategic plan, but boards are supposed to be strategic thinkers and have that focus in that view. And so that's what this action plan is for, to just keep you focused on the work. You can pull us back, um, we don't need the documents. I can see everyone's face. There you go. The three that, yeah, everyone's sitting there, the four of you I can see. And, and so.
My face, Deborah.
I said, I was.
Deborah, I have a relationship, you have to understand.
Are sitting in a room, so.
You technically are. And then there's Jackie.
Deborah, did you take care of that bug?
I did. You have no idea. I'm just not, I'm not used to, I'm a, I'm a northern girl. But anyway, I did. And so I'm hoping that this, again, this, this tool will, will continue to help you just, you really stay focused. Because you can easily be distracted. Um, the superintendent and her staff are gearing up. And wait till they launch after the new year. You guys are going to be exposed to a different type of reporting out and engagement. And which is going to be exciting. And, and, and watch the, the strategic plan come, really come to fruition. You just see all of this in action is very exciting. So I want to commend you guys again for being a, a model district. We talk about you all the time. I talk about you all over the country. And, um, you guys get it, you know, you're, you get it. And, and not every district does, um, a little bit more work. But, uh, but you guys definitely have evidence, especially when you have a plan that totally aligns with what the board said they wanted. And the superintendent followed that. So that, that's awesome. You have a great team. So that's what I have to share with you. I look forward to seeing you guys in person next time, whenever. I don't know what's on the schedule yet. And Nicole just tells me to come to California and I come. But wherever we will be. I look forward, thank you guys so much.
Yeah, I, I want to thank you because you were, you've been with us from the beginning, you and Nicole, right? When we were that, that pioneer cohort of like, we don't even know what this looks like, like post LCFM. And then COVID hit. And then I want to say, this is possibly the third constitution of this board that you've watched. Like, there's been like these people on the screen, like this is the third, like, kind of formation. Uh, when we started to where we're now. And that to hear you say, and actually I'm proud of us, I'm proud of us as a board, past and present. And future that we, we never lost sight, right? That this was still in the back. Our plan when COVID, when the pandemic and we had to respond. That this was still to Vice President Kirby Gonzalez's point is that. Dr. Hildreth came to us for purpose and reason and still did this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And to deal with everything else.
Yeah.
And what I've always shared with you guys that it shouldn't matter if the board changes or when that superintendent see. If you develop the culture, it should, it's just, you're gonna pass the gap because we're gonna, or the, we're gonna continue the work. And that's what you guys are showing. And yes, this is the third iteration, um, but the work is still going. It is slowed down a little bit like everything else, but then you just continue. And that means that the board is really dedicated. To this work. And so that means that the superintendent and her staff can be dedicated to the work as well.
Yeah, no, but a- a- and it would not have happened without your, your Nicole's guidance. I'm just, we just direct by believing in us. And helping us through and through the change management and the culture and Mutu and Dr. Hildreth. Your, your vision of implementing our desire to do this work. Like we, we just, we get to sit at the ten thousand, fifty thousand, but level and have our opinions, right? But y'all and your staff are doing the work and changing the water and changing our organization. You know, risk, you know, it emits all of the things, uh, everything else is happening. And I'm proud of our districts and our district leaders and our administrators and our partners. Who are leaning into this, like, okay, let me breathe and let us, I mean, but to Deborah's point, like, I'm not sure. Like when we start going, things start happening and comments start changing. And, um, just, just proud, proud of you, Dr. H, proud of our, our administrators who are, may or may not still be here. It's just, it's, it's a heavy lift. It is a heavy lift because I'm sitting here in Baltimore and hearing a lot of stories across the way. I'm like, Deborah, to your point, yeah, I brag about like nationally what we do.
You should.
Like, it's like, what do you mean? What did you do? I'm like, well, aren't you doing it? No.
No.
That's, it's amazing. Like, what do you mean, Jackie? You have a strategic plan. Where are you going now? Like, oh, the thing that we had, they were like talking about all day long for the last three days. I'm just gonna go to a board meeting and just talk about the implementation of how to do equity in my school district. Like what? I'm like, yeah. So let's just go.
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Bye Jackie.
All right.
We haven't gavelled out yet.
Oh, I, I, sorry. I wanted to say bye before you. Okay, sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Folks don't need me.
Okay, bye-bye.
So now we can adjourn.